I'd like to call into session the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30, A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the posted URL. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: NCAT, Educational Channel, Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And it was listed on the agenda to register in advance for this website. Okay, so the first thing we have on our agenda is the action of the minutes, and I'd like to thank Shaw Lepper for the way that she organized these with italics so that we can maybe do these very efficiently. Paul Bucka.
Well, assuming that everyone's in agreement with this, I'd like to do these as a group if possible. So I would move that we approve the open meeting minutes of June 17th, 2020, the special open meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2020, the special open meeting minutes of July 31st, 2020, the special open meeting minutes of August 12th, 2020, of August 25th, 2020, August 26th, 2020. And that's, that line's repeated twice, I'm not sure why. But anyway, that's, I move that we vote to approve all of those.
Okay, can we, even though, because it's there, it's the last two, there was an August 26th at 7:00 and 7:30.
So, so moved.
Okay. Is there-
Thanks, yeah.
... by Dan Kalenda. This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Donna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Pileczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimously. And we have the last set of minutes. Mr. Bucka.
So I move that we approve and release the executive session minutes of June 17th, 2020, the special meeting executive session minutes of August 12th, August 25th, and August 26th, 2020.
Second.
Second by Dan Kalenda. Any discussion? Seeing that this is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yeah.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Donna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Pileczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Going on to the next agenda item is educational policy, and we have none at this time. So we will go on to new business, which is the APTO presentation. Greg.
So we have, I believe we have Carrie Probst and Kumoo Sabarjan, the co-chairs of the APTO with us this evening to present an APTO update. Typically, this update takes place in the spring, but again, because of COVID-19, we moved it to the fall. And Stephanie, I'm not sure if you see Kumoo and Carrie in the attendee list.
I do not see them.
Okay. So if it's the will of the chairperson, do you want to move on? And when they arrive, we can jump to that agenda item?
Yeah, that'd be great. So Stephanie, just keep track if you see that they come in, okay?
I will, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So next we have, under new businesses, back to school update. Greg?
Sure. So, you know, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the reopening of our schools. The first day of students on 9/16 was a success, even though it was remote. And the high school faculty and staff did an excellent job welcoming 1,402 students. I'd like to thank Algonquin Leadership Team, Principal Sean Bevan, Assistant Principals Tim McDonald, Andy McGowan, Kathy Carminianni, and Mike Moserino for their tremendous effort. And Principal Bevan will share some more details during his principal's report about the reopening. I'd also like to take a moment and thank the central office leadership team. They did Herculean task of preparing for our students and teachers. From Heather Richards, the HR Director, with interactive dialogues, hiring, recruiting, making sure that we, negotiations were happening, she did an outstanding job. Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services, and her team, again, running the summer school, extended school year program and preparing for our students' return. Rhoda Webb, Director of English Language Education Equity, wrote it, spent much of the summer writing grants and supporting our English language families and supporting the reopening efforts. Julie Doyle, Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning, and her team, preparing technology for students' return, distributing devices, implementing a new student information system, and just preparing everything required for September 16th. Mary Ellen Duggan, Health and Wellness Coordinator. She worked tirelessly preparing all the protocols, procedures, securing PPP and collaborating with the medical advisory team and the boards of health. And also Dr. Medina, our district physician. Keith Lloy, Director of Operations, again, preparing our facilities in concert with Mike Gorman, working with our Food Services Department, our Transportation Department, and making sure that our classrooms are ready. And Keith spent much time at the high school over the summer. Becky Pellegrino for Director of Finance, helping secure grant funding, making sure we had procured PPE and making sure everyone had the resources in order to do what they needed to get our students back in the buildings. And Stephanie Reinhorn, Assistant Superintendent, you know, again, working on the reopening plan for teaching and learning, looking at different models, preparing, you know, 10 days of professional development, and also supporting the standalone remote program. So, again, this summer was a Herculean effort on the central office leadership team, and I just want to thank the team for their efforts. And I hope we never have another, another summer like the one we just had. And at this point, I'll turn it over back to Chairperson Joan Frank and open it up to any questions the committee members might have for any of the central office leadership team.
Before I open it up to the members, those of you who'd like to speak, remember just to go on to the participants icon at the bottom and then just raise your hand through the panelist section and attendees. Before I do that, I would just like to thank the central office leadership team. We always know how hard you work during a regular school year. And it seemed that we were working side by side by you, with you this year from the numerous meetings. So it was like double, the, double the efforts that you had to put into this. But I think the smooth opening of the school year proves that all the hard work, all the medical updates that you gave, all the forums that you had, all the taking in the parent questions, having a meeting where there were 400 participants at one of our meetings, Zoom meeting, and answering their questions was, was valuable. And it also showed the wonderful efforts that everybody has done. So I would be remiss if I do individuals, I'd just like to say bravo to the central office leadership team. And I know that you're still continuing to work hard as we bring the, all those kids back through the rephasing. So at this time, if there is any other comments or questions from the board members. I just have Kathleen Holland, is that a comment that you would like me to read?
No, I'm happy to speak it for myself, that would be fine, thank you, Madam Chair. So I would very much like to acknowledge the noble efforts of the Finance Department for whom everything had to be changed. As ensemble specialists, they were not able to do ensembles in the way that they have been taught and they've been doing for years. So even though most of us, myself included, who teach academic classes can adapt very well to Zoom, this is also a significant effort, and I would like very much to acknowledge them in the senior leadership list that we've just had. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Sean and Shay?
I typically don't like to duplicate things that other members have said, but I, and I think Joan put it very eloquently. But I do want to just express great gratitude and acknowledge the, Greg, you said Herculean. I don't even know what a word beyond Herculean is. This was a seven-day-a-week, night and weekend process since probably last May that everyone in the central office and then school-based has been doing. And so, just, you know, great appreciation for the work that was done and knowing that it's continuing and continuing to be refined. So, you know, thank you to, to everyone involved.
Great comment, thank you also, Sean. Paul Desmond?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'll let go of all of that, but I don't want to repeat it all, but great job by everybody. I'm just wondering if we're still targeting October 6th for the comeback date or if there's any hope of making it earlier?
So I will, through the chair, so we are maintaining that October 6th start date for our first hybrid group. We had a successful elementary launch this week with students starting on Tuesday. A week, next Tuesday, the middle schools will begin, and then the following Tuesday, our high school students will begin. And that is the current plan at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Seeing that there aren't any other hands raised, we will now go to the next agenda item. And Greg, is Mike there?
Yes, so Mike Moserino is with us.
I'm here, yep.
Okay, so the next agenda item we have is athletics update, fall sports update, and MIAA recommendations. Good evening, Mike Moserino.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back, everybody, to a new school year. Superintendent Martino, do I have sharing privileges, if you don't mind? I could share some, a document.
Sure, just give me one second.
Yeah, if you don't-
All right, Mike, you should be all set.
And for those audience members, I was incorrect in addressing Mike by his title as Athletic Director of Algonquin Regional High School and a former student of ARHS.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Again, welcome back, everybody, to a new school year. This is certainly an unprecedented time for all of us. Over the past several months, there's been a lot of hard work completed by many individuals to create opportunities for our student athletes for the 2020 and 2021 school year. While there's still a lot of uncertainty on the dynamic of the sports season, one thing is for certain, this year will be unusual year for all of us in athletics. With that being said, we will face many challenges along the way, but the main focus for athletics will be to get our student athletes back playing sports safely and with the well-being of our student athletes as top priority. This year, we will face many challenges filled with many great opportunities to positively influence the experience of our high school students, student athletes throughout the Commonwealth. On Friday, September 18th, we had close to 360 excited, smiling faces returning to the field of play after six months of absence from athletics, and it was outstanding and amazing to see. I would like to add before I review this athletics document, all this information, including protocols and guidelines that has been worked on from our league through, in conjunction with EA, DESI, and MIAA, was reviewed at our coaches' meetings in which our Health and Wellness Coordinator, Marie Ellen Duggan, and our district physician, Dr. Medina, attended to answer questions for all the coaches. These topics were discussed at the ARHS School Reopening Plan webinar hosted by Principal Bevan and the administrators, and all information is posted on our athletic website. Families will be notified via our one-call system when all new information evolves. So as you can see, I have our mid-watch league document, and I've taken all the rules and regulations and inputted it to how it pertains to Algonquin athletics. You can see here, we returned to sports schedule, the registrations opened on June 15th and they closed on September 8th. Our, the board of directors approved the following for the fall, which is boys and girls soccer, field hockey, boys golf, and boys and girls cross-country. We have varsity JV1 and JV2 programs offered at the boys and two, boys and girls soccer level programs. Field hockey, we have varsity in JV1. The schools in our pod do not offer JV2 field hockey, so players trying out for JV2 will be considered for the JV1 roster. The MI approved the season structure for the 2021 athletic calendar year is below. As previously discussed, we have September 18th and November 20th is what we are doing currently right now. November 30th is our winter sports, nothing has changed yet, and that is still the same start date as in previous years. February 22nd to April 23rd is now that fall sports two floating season, which includes football, girls volleyball, fall cheer, and unified basketball. These were sports that were moved out of fall season one to this floating season, deemed as a, as a high risk by the EEA recommendations and guidelines. And then lastly, we have our spring sports season, which begins on April 26th. It will no longer start on the third Monday in March. It will start now on April 26th. Regular spring sports will be, will be going on, and will be going all the way to July 3rd. Additional information is out of season coaching that has been discussed with our coaches for all those fall two, floating season sports have an opportunity to work with their teams in the fall. Our schedules and pods were just created a little over a week ago, and they're up on the website. They're, they are modified, but it's a great thing that we do have a schedule in place. Our athletic pod this year, this fall season will consist of ARHS, Westboro, Shrewsbury, Leominster, and La Chusen. Our other section we have is the basic pod guidelines that all schools will follow. All of these guidelines, all the, all the mid-watch and central mass schools will follow, and all the pods will follow. Our coaches are required to have accurate roster for contact information, required to have accurate emergency contact list for each member, and participate in schools to adhere by tracking team attendance and traveling contact list for all team members. And all team members are required to wear a mask at all times, exception when allowed by the EA and MIAA Sports Modification Guidelines for competition play. All event staff are required to wear a mask at times. Teams are required to travel with both a med kit and a COVID kit, which we have provided. Home teams will provide separate sanitized stations where required. I can tell you, we have about 15 different tables set up at all of our fields right now, and we have a lot of PP equipment out there, and our coaches and our kids are doing a wonderful job following the rules and staying under the modifications that we need to abide by. We have our fall practice guidelines, some of which I highlighted, where following the government's, government's office, EA, DESI, and MIAA protocols and guidelines. No one will attend the games or practice if they do not feel well. This has been stressed, they must stay home. No player will be punished if they miss a practice or a game. Masks will be worn by student athletes and coaches when entering school grounds, fields, and while gathering as a team. We've done a great job of putting signage all over our facilities to remind people as they enter our, our facilities to either go to practice or soon, a competition. Recommended supplies for our student athletes for their personal gym, gym bags are below. This is what we've told our athletes that they must include in their personal gym bags. Some, some other items, our practice schedule would be five days a week practicing competition, six days a week during this first 14-day period, which the teams are using to understand the sports modifications before they are, their first game. Once the season starts, they will practice five days a week. If they want to do a weekend day, they will have to take a day off during the week. Max of 90 minutes on the field, two hour max for, for the, for the total practice. We have competition guidelines. The school provided COVID coach in all contests, including myself, site admin, a daily checklist, make sure sanitizing stations is set up and filled. No two sports will be completed on the same day, we have that through our scheduling. We have limited game schedule, eight to 11 games against our pods, and JV and JV2 levels could be less, depending on how many JV1 and JV2 teams are provided in our pod. Our facilities, access to ARHS in-person learners only when they return on October 6th, 50% capacity at one time in our locker room facility, to be monitored by the AD, athletic trainer, and coaches. And they will be, they have rules and regulations before they are entering the facilities. We also have player expectations that we've gone over with all of our players, or some of here, but we have bring extra mask, recommended six per bag, because once the masks are wet, they're no longer effective. No gators are allowed, that's a rule passed amongst our whole pod. Maintain six feet of social distance. I was out there today for our sports modifications and putting dots on the fields to make sure that the 11 bench areas, kids on the bench for football, I mean, not football, for soccer and field hockey, all know the appropriate distance when they're on the bench area. Sanitize after getting off the bus, after warmups, during halftime, and then in competition. We've also talked about fan, fan and spectator information, which is, we're, in our pod, in our league, has voted the only home team fans will be allowed, and this is the EA guidelines that I provided. In order to enforce the state mandated restriction attendance, the mid-watch league will only be allowing spectators associated with the home school into their facility. These necessary adjustments, spectator limits are being made in order to continue to provide a safe athletic environment for our student athletes. We are asking our board and families, student bodies, and community to respect the board of health limitations on spectators at sporting events. This could be changed if the EA guidelines comes out with specific guidelines. Athletic trainer, rules and regular protocols, we have official protocols, we have game day staff protocols, which we have included in here, which is responsible for checking fans in, making sure fans remain socially distanced, hand sanitized stations. We have a COVID coach, which includes myself and staff members. We've provided our coaches with kits. Each team will travel with a COVID kit, that includes hand sanitizer, gloves, and we purchased this all, and all of our coaches have this for their teams. We will follow the DESI guidelines when we, for transportation. We will be allowed to have 23 max capacity on an ARHS bus, which includes 22 players, equipment, and one coach. Our roster sizes were limited this year. Oh, sorry. Soccers are 22 for both home and away, per level. Boys and girls play at opposite sites at, when their competitions begin. Field hockey, we have 22, home and away, per level, we have varsity in JV1. Cross-country, no limit at home, but 20 away, per gender, boys and girls will compete at opposite sites. Golf, we have a total of 14 to 16, with alternate spots, six will travel. And players who don't make the roster cannot transfer eligibility to no-cut sport for contact tracing purposes. We've talked about the sub-RC levels previously, we've also gone over senior recognition. We want to have an opportunity to recognize our seniors, that's usually done at the end of the year. And we've recommended to talk amongst the AD and all the coaches to try to provide it within the first three home games so our seniors can get recognized. Our co, our families, and it's posted on our website, we've talked about our concussion and impact program. We have our COVID-19 information that was supplied by our district physician, and all the families are aware of. So we would follow school guidelines if you cannot be a practice. If you have any symptoms of COVID, maybe exposed to COVID, have traveled outside of safe states, you need to report the symptoms to the school nurse, admin, coach, even if it's your remote learning day. Lastly, if there is a positive case, our COVID-19 team will work with local public health officials, determine close contacts, who will then be quarantined for 14 days. From athlete to a positive, per American Academic and Pediatrics American College of Cardiology, we will have to be out of play for a minimum of four weeks, on medical evaluation and clearance upon return. And we'll have to follow the graduated return to play program. And lastly, I reminded all of our, please remember to follow ARHS athletics website for updates for all of you to view the handbook in its entirety. Boss was stated that please visit our district website, that includes our reopening plans related to COVID information. This is our district reopening plan website, it's provided for our families. Lastly, as you, as we embark on this unique athletic year, let's keep in mind the health and well-being of our student athletes, coaches, families, friends throughout the season. This should be a year of awareness, sportsmanship, and fair play. And I am wishing everyone a very safe and healthy year, and if there's ever, ever questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, thank you for the concise and very detailed report. Through this, through Greg, I'd like to know if you could send us the link to this so that we could have a copy of this, which I think is very important, especially with the dates that would go into the winter and the spring.
Yes, absolutely, I can provide you with the mid-watch central mass league handbook that we've taken this information from.
Okay. And is there, onto this document, is there a sign-off for parents or the students that, that says they have read this and they know all the new procedures that are now during this COVID period?
We do not have a sign-off in place, but I reviewed, with our coaches meeting, reviewed over the webinar that we have, and I'm meeting individually with every parent and team through our individual team breakout meetings. Once, within the next week or so, each one of our team are holding team meetings with a player and a parent to review all this information.
And did you say you were going to be present at those meetings?
Yes, I will be present at these meetings, yep.
Okay. Because that was going to be my follow-up question was, how, how is this going to be disseminated to the players and the parents?
Yep, this, this will be reviewed by myself and the coaches at our individual, what we normally do is we, at our fall sports night, we, I speak amongst the crowd of everybody who's attending and interested in participating. And then we have our coaches break out into team meetings and address all the parents and players. Since we could not do that in person this year, I've addressed it through our webinar that we hosted for our reopening plan. I went over all these rules, but not everybody can attend. So therefore, our coaches will be holding Zoom meetings since the rosters are formed with all players and parents, and I will be reviewing all this information.
Thank you, Mike, and please thank all the coaches and wish all the student athletes success and, and a good season, whether they win or they lose, and the sportsmanship is the most important thing. So please pass that on. And Mike, do you mind taking some questions from board members?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Kathleen Holland, and then Paul Bucka. Kathleen, you're muted.
I'm sorry, my hand was still up from before, and I did not bring it down. I do not have a question at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Paul Bucka?
Oh, Mike, I, I thank you very much for the update. I suspect you know what I'm, what I'm going to mention, I've got kind of a pet peeve here on this one. I'm glad that the concussion test was part of your presentation, and I'm pleased to know that it's going to be part of your presentation with the coaches and the parents and the, and the students when they go forward. I'm truly hoping that at the end of this school year, we don't find out that the number of athletes that have taken the test is, again, in single digits. There's got to be a way you can encourage greater participation there. Thanks.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, no, I was just going to follow up, I, we had a plan in last, I think we met last school committee, previous year, we had a plan in place to have lab dates. So we had lab dates in place for March at the end of last year to have all of our coaches and participants into the labs and really talk about concussion impact testing. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we were able to, we, we had to postpone that, and we were up to, I think, as many as 20 individuals, whereas two years ago, we were at five. So the plan, the plan is absolutely to get more involvement and to be, and to make sure that this is, all of our families understand what we have available for them to take advantage of.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Key?
Hey, Mike, thanks for the presentation, that was good. Question as far as your schedules, do the teams have the same amount of home games? Like, so say like, I'm trying to figure out how to say that, it's like, do all the varsity teams have the same amount of like home team, home games so the parents can have, go to enough games with their kids?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, right now, we're scheduled between eight and 10 games, which, we have eight, definitely, and it's split between four and four. If we get to 10, it will be split between five and five. So we will, we will have, we're working out the schedule where we're playing soccer on a particular day, Tuesdays and Thursdays, against the same school that week. And on Mondays and Fridays will be field hockey, on Wednesdays will be cross-country. We're playing, let's say, Shrewsbury that entire week versus all those sports, and it's going to be split up evenly as much as we can in regards to home and away games.
Okay, all right, thanks. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Kathleen Holland?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to second Paul Bucka's consistent concern about the concussion testing. And I know that you said, Mr. Moserino, that- I know that you said, Mr. Moserino, that you would encourage it, but I'd also really like to assert the biological rationale and the importance of protecting the brain. And wondering if you can tie that in with Mary Ellen Duggan's messages on health, that that is the basis for the testing. I, I know certainly that athletes will try to avoid it and play just to be able to play and of course. As adults, that's something that we really can't allow.
Absolutely. I think it's something that we can, me and Mary Ellen can absolutely evolve and. I know at the beginning of the year at our fall sports night and every single season, sports nights that we have and we have three a year. That we have, the nurses participate and explain the program of what we have to offer, but we can always get better and we can always. Send out more information, detailed information, the knowledge.
That's great. I had a mild, they called it a mild TBI one time from a fall on the ice. And I was daft for days. And as a teacher, of course, that's very difficult. As a developing brain, it's far more grave. So I really appreciate the emphasis of the biological rationale and I thank you.
Okay, seeing that there aren't any other questions, I would just like to make a recommendation, Mike, if possible. And it will be up to Mr. Sean Bevan, your administrator and also Greg, but. I'd like to know if you would be able to come back maybe in our November meeting before the winter sports season begins, just to give us a quick update. And just to let us know how, if there, if there will be any changes that have come up between now and then on as far, as far as the winter sports.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. Greg, any comments?
I just want to thank again, Mike Moserino. It's been a, again, one of those summers where every routine and typical startup experience has changed and. Mike has handled every obstacle very well. And has kept the safety of our students and staff at the forefront of his work. And I'd also like to thank Mary Ellen Duggan. She's been again instrumental in making sure that. Our coaches have the information they need, understand the protocols and the seriousness of this. So Mary Ellen, thank you for all of your work on helping launching athletic season this year.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to thank Mary Ellen as well and Mike. They've both done a great job. I was able to go around to some of the fields in the last couple of days with Mike and. Yesterday, just to give you a sense for the level of detail, Mr. Moserino is associated or dedicated to this. He was hand delivering whistles to coaches because they can't use regular whistles. They need to use battery powered whistles because the. The kind of expression of air is unsafe and so he was going coach to coach to deliver these. You know, these items that I didn't even truly know existed, but that's the level of detail that he's associated with. With this project to get fall sports up and running and the kids really appreciated it. You could really see the, the weather was spectacular. The kids enjoyed being out there and a lot of that, all of that was really due to Mr. Moserino's work along with Mrs. Duggan, so thank you both.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Oh, I thought, I saw your hand raised.
Oh, no, I, nope.
Okay.
I was, I actually was telling our custodial staff, hold on here.
Just like we do for our husbands and wives when they start entering the room. Mr. Bevan, thank you so much for that remark because I think that we know. All the administrators have been stepping up and going forward, but even something so simple as a whistle. Not being aware of it until you got like, oops, we can't do it, but. So that just shows you again, another recommendation and another highlight of our administrators. And our athletic director taking it to the next level and Mary Ellen Duggan with working together with the athletic department. To make sure that our students are safe and the coaches and all people involved. So thank you very much for all those. Little tidbits, but important ones. Thank you so much. Okay, seeing that there aren't any other questions right now, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda under new business. Which is legislative update.
Yes, I just wanted to give the committee a quick update on the Student Opportunity Act. As you know, last November of two thousand nineteen. The Student Opportunity was acted, increased state aid by one point four billion dollars. And Algonquin was supposed to see a little under fifty thousand dollar increase in state as a result. I think the Student Opportunity Act and the funding right now is in limbo due to the overall budget landscape at the state level. And I just also want to point out that in terms of our advocacy as a committee. Part of the Student Opportunity Act was circuit breaker and. Student Support Services and Special Education Transportation reimbursement. Which was not something we were reimbursed in the past. And with the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act, we would have been reimbursed. So again, I will be looking for. The committee support to advocate with our legislator, legislators to make sure that's funded adequately. Because it could be a significant amount of dollars for our district. So just a quick update on the Student Opportunity Act.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything that we have to do as far as a letter or to? You were saying to make sure it's funded adequately through our legislators through a letter, or is there a time? Through a Zoom meeting when we may see if one of the current legislators can be on Zoom meeting? What would be the most appropriate?
So I am working with MASSS and MASC and they are. They do have some template letters that we can use as a committee and I will get that to you, Joan. In the next day or two.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, can I just?
I'm sorry. I don't know, Greg or maybe Becky, but. So the shortfall here on the, on the aid increasingly expected is. Is, I, I believe not, not. Not in excess of what we've kind of would typically anticipate our E and D would be at the end of any, many given year.
Correct. We, we use FY twenty. Chapter seventy funding as the forecasting for our budget, because again, in the spring, we were anticipating significant cuts. So it does not impact our overall appropriated budget that was passed.
But, but we could end up with a smaller E and D, which could impact a future year's assessment.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, alright, terrific. Thanks.
Okay, no other questions. We'll go on to the next under new business, which is the proposed. Distribution facility abutting Algonquin Regional High School. And just as a quick review, this was first brought to our attention by Karen Ayers, school committee member. In the audience sharing at the, at the last meeting and since then Greg and I've had discussions about this. And Greg has also talked to John Kader, the town administrator of Northborough. To see as a butters, what is the situation? So at this time I'll turn it over to Greg to give us an update.
So as. Chairperson Frank shared, I did have a chance to speak with town administrator John Kader. About the proposed distribution facility slated to be built on Bartlett Street. There are no zoning issues. It is zoned appropriately. And as it is allowed as of right and has been grandfathered. And the question really for the committee, committee is what material impact does it have on the high school? You know, does it have a traffic impact? But again, what material impact does it have? So I think the, the challenge is that that land has been owned by the same owner for twenty years. It is in the correct zone and zone, industrial zone. The owners are not seeking a variance to build the warehouse. And again, it would be in the will of the committee if. Committee wanted us to pursue this further and find out more information if there's what material impact on the high school it may have.
Any question? I can't, I lost my, my hand thing. Where is it?
I, under the participants.
No, go ahead. You can, you can do the next. Oh, sorry.
Alright, Karen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I forgot, I lost the hand thing there on my screen, but I, I did want to say that. You know, I, I am a little. I have a lot of issues with this project, especially, you know, as it's right next to the high school. I think we, the letter that was brought forward to the committee. Hits a lot of the objectives of, of why we should be concerned as our role as the school committee as far as. The traffic hazards for our students, our teachers, our parents, our community. Traffic would be number one. You know, and the safety. The other thing is also for the pedestrians and the students that, like Mr. Moserino was just on talking about the cross country. And the significant. Work that they've done with the trails right at the high school and this is a significant impact to those trails, especially Stirrup Book Trail. So the other thing too is I think we should be communicating with the planning board who is. Has the governance on this issue and. The, the, we, we also weren't notified properly of our abutter, of our, our budding issue, so. You know, my concern would be that we, we do have, you know, issues. We do have. Not, what's the word I'm looking for? Rights as a butters to make our, our position known as to what we want. Or what, or what our feelings are about this proposal. I mean thirty bays of trucks and, you know, large trucks. There's a Dewey pile on Bartlett Street and FedEx. That always come right through the town instead of, you know, going right up to San Morano Drive. And yes, Greg, yes, I, it was grandfathered and I do understand that too. So it's, they, the, the. Proponent and the, the. The, the people who are. Proposing the project are definitely, you know, have rights to do that because they bought the land long ago. But, you know, I, I, if anyone else has an issue, you know, I, I do think we need to, to discuss the safety issues that are. Going to impact the high school. That's my point.
Okay, thanks Karen. I have Paul Desmond and then Dan Kalenda.
Thank you. I have a question first of all, exactly where this is. Because I was, I'm trying to figure it out from the documents I sent. It said it was like sort of across the street from FedEx and Dewey pile. And there was just a warehouse sort of building that was just built there, right? Which was vacant for a long time. I think it just got occupied. So we're not talking about that building, right? We're talking about a new building? Is that right?
That is accurate.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, and I, so, so it abuts the high school how? From the rear to the?
Yeah, so if you, if you're exiting Algonquin on Bartlett Street and you take a left. It's about a quarter of the mile down on your left. There is a trail that kind of runs. Perpendicular to Bartlett Street and it's in that area. There's a, there's actually a sign there. That you can see if you drive by. Across the street is a, I believe there's another building. It's a smaller building with a, I believe at one time. Autumn, maybe an automotive and a woodworking shop.
Okay. So, I mean, the cumulative effect here is, is concerned because there's, you know, like I said, that new warehouse that was just built within the last year. There's another building of some sort going up across the street from that one, right next to FedEx, at least one. And then down the street further. There's some sort of garage. It's, it's on Cedar Street, actually. There's some sort of big garage that's going to house, I don't know what, you know, it's just a whole bunch of bays in there. So, I mean, it just seems like an awful lot of construction going on in that area that, you know, cumulatively could, could be a problem.
Alright, thank you, Paul. Greg, would there be some way to get a schematic? Drawing of that that we could send to the members to actually show where this is proposed and location to our high school grounds?
Yes, I can reach out to town administrator Kader.
Okay, Dan Kalenda and then Kathleen Holland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is, does this fall within the purview of the school committee? Greg?
So. My, I think the, the question that the school committee needs to answer is what material impact on the high school does this, this building have? And if, if it's, it's not an impact, then I think it does not. It's not under the purview of this committee. But again.
I would agree with that statement and I thought that you might say that. So I think we need to understand if there's a material impact to the school. Material is, it can be defined in a variety of ways by a variety of people and a variety of lawyers, so. I trust that the planning board, under whose purview this actually resides. Is, you know, does an in-depth analysis, including a traffic analysis. As well as oftentimes those are multiple traffic analyses and independent analysis of. You know, traffic and impact to the community as a whole, which includes the high school. We also have to be mindful not to, you know, step outside of our boundaries here as to what this committee is charged to do and, and, and has oversight of. We can surely ask those questions of the planning board and ensure, and ensure that they are doing their job on. In, in dealing with the planning board in, in Southborough for many years. You know, these things take a long time to do because there is a significant amount of. You know, back and forth and question and answering that, that goes on. There's also, you know, an impact to the community. There are, there may very well likely be. Revenues coming to the town of Northborough that the town of Northborough needs. There may be jobs that residents from Northborough and Southborough. Benefit from, from, you know, this facility. So we gotta be, I just would caution the committee to be very careful about, you know, what we do, how we do and why we do it and ensure that we are. The, the, the right board, you know, because again, if this is not material to the, to the school, then. You know, we could be operating well outside of our charge and I just want to make sure that we don't do that. But at the same time, making sure that, you know, the right questions are being asked by the right authority, which I believe is the Northborough Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And those are, those are good points and. I mean, after talking to Greg about this and knowing that he talked to John Kader and, you know, saw that and seeing that we are in a butter. I think this is something we can just keep on, my feeling is just to keep it on the back burner, be aware of it. And any member who is on the regional committee from Northborough can attend the pant, planning meetings. And just keep abreast and see what goes on through this, I think is, I don't think there's anything that we can do at the present time. Is my feeling. Kathleen Holland and then Karen. Kathleen?
Thank you. I would suggest there's another way to look at it in terms of we are. Educating a generation of people who will be living on an ever-growing denser planet with natural resource dwindling. To the point of scarcity, think water. In Colorado, in some places you can't get a house that will guarantee water beyond ten years. That is part of the, the agreement of the purchase and sales. So we really should be thinking about how we create stewardship. And I think we do have neighbor rights, even perhaps not legal, but civic. To have a civic voice, just to make it a civic voice, to make a statement. I get to read these scholarship applications every year for our Jazz Foundation and we're looking for those that are environmentalists. And I see that they're lit up and they're primarily, every one of those letters talks about the environmental sciences class. The frustration they felt with the throwaway trays in the cafeteria, etc., their consciousness of it through education. And then our denouncement of it through practice. I think the deterioration of our natural resources for money and jobs just doesn't sell. It doesn't sell me anymore. Not with the research about how we need open space and to be a model for children who are going to face such. Environmental calamity and it could be economic too, but it surely will be the source upon which we all live. Thank you. And it could be economic too, but it surely will be the source upon which we all live. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, Karen Ayers?
Thank you. Thanks Kathleen. And, and um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of comment on, I, I, on the whole, is, is it our purview? And I'm, I'm not saying that it's our, our purview to, you know, get involved in the planning board's um, decision. What I'm saying is it's our purview as a butters. We were issued a um, a butters notification. And so for, in force, if that was your house, you would probably be concerned. And so this is kind of our house, and so that's why I'm concerned. And um, and I would agree that, you know, with Kathleen's point about. The overuse and the overabundance of um. Resources going on, especially in that, in that route. And I do, I, from my point of view, I will say that I definitely support our planning board. Um, and all the decisions that they make. And, and I don't think quite honestly that this, I'm, I'm concerned that this is not as long as the process as some may think. And that this decision, um, if we don't at, at least put forth maybe a, a letter of, a letter to the planning board. With some of our concerns. Um, and quite honestly, I'd be willing to, uh, if you want me to attend the planning board meeting as a school rep, I will. Um, I just don't know if I can attend th- those meetings, cause they kind of fall, um, on, like I said, I usually cannot attend. Um, but my personal opinion is that I really do think that we should at least um. Perhaps put a letter together um, expressing our concerns.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Uh, Chris Covino?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to um, really echo a lot of the sentiments, uh, including Dan's that have been expressed here. But I guess what I would like to say in terms of whether we have a material interest in this. Um, you know, it's our responsibility really to make sure that we're serving the students of our school, uh, of Algonquin, um, to the best of our ability. And if the construction of this facility somehow adversely impacts the experience of the students that we have. Then I would go so far as to say that we do have a vested interest. Um, I do think that the decision ultimately lies with the planning board. But I think we would be remiss not to um, represent uh, the students in this case. Uh, to make sure that if, I'm not saying there is gonna be an impact, but if there is an impact on the students or the student experience. Uh, then I think we have responsibility as a committee to make those issues known to the planning board.
Okay, Paul Bucka. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Joan. You know, I'm, uh, so in fifteen years on the school committee, I, I don't know that we've ever taken a stand. Yeah, on, on an issue of, of this nature or, or frankly, any other issue that, you know, that wasn't really kind of educationally related. Or, or just dealt with our property itself. Uh, so I, I'm, I, I shared and, and felt, felt a, a lot in agreement with what Dan was saying. And I think what Greg was saying is, you know, that if they're not asking for variances. And if they have agreed to already do certain things, for us to kind of jump in and get involved at this point in time. You know, reading a letter from the neighbors that asked us to help, you know, their biggest concerns are that although the, I think, from what I could read. Um, although the people building the building have agreed to certain mitigations, they're, they're concerned that they won't follow through on their agreements. So, you know, all the trucks have to take a left and can't go on Lyman Street. And then, you know, the, the neighbors say, well, you need a cop there twenty-four hours a day to enforce that agreement. Well, you know, I mean, uh, you know, I guess you do, but, you know, maybe you just designed the driveway so that it's impossible for the trucker to take a right. And, and, you know, he's, he's back out on, on, on his way towards Simorano. You know, so some of those concerns were more, there was a lot of, well, what if all these things don't work out the way the builder says? And, you know, I guess you need to, you need to pay attention with a jaundiced eye to some of those claims. But this is kind of new territory for us. We'd be, we'd be drifting out of our lane, I think, to, you know, to, you know, steal a phrase. So I, I, I don't mind paying attention to what's going on, but I would not want anyone from the school committee to be in a planning board meeting at this point in time. And, and imply that the school committee was opposed to the construction of this, uh, uh, of this business. I think that would be premature on our part.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Sean Ashay?
If I'm unmuted, sorry. Um, I, I would agree with Paul at this point. I um, I don't feel I have been presented, um, you know, a, a, a neighborhood concern is, is, is helpful. But I, I don't think I have details from the project or the planning board or to know how this is actually going to impact. Um, traffic adversely, you know, um, you know, concretely. Or how it would um, exactly impact the daily life of students or the overall education. So if there was more information to come forward, um, uh, you know, that would be helpful rather than just a uh, community statement. Uh, for me to, to, to move forward on um, some type of statement for the committee. I feel like I need more information.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that we do need to have more information. I think that thanks to Karen, we were, we're, we're aware of this. Uh, it has uh, promoted another dialogue with the town administrator about this. And um, I think we just have to keep this on our forefront and be aware of it. And um, as myself is the liaison to the Northborough Selectment, I will be attending through Zoom their meetings. And I can get updates through them if it comes up on something on their agenda items. And I'm sure Karen would keep us abreast. But I think the first thing, cause I really don't know where this is gonna be, is maybe get a schematic from Greg or from the town hall request. And maybe Greg and I can talk off um, out of the meeting, uh, to see what would be the best way to get that and get that to you. So that you could see where it's actually gonna lie in relationship to the architectural drawing and the um, the um, grounds of Algonquin Regional High School.
So, to the chair.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanna, um, you know, I think again, my role as a superintendent is to, to support the committee and its work. And I think the question really on the table is what material impact on the high school does this project have? And I think when there is a question, you have to ask more questions. And I think that's what we need to do is ask more questions around the traffic studies, the environmental impact. I'm sure there's data out there and I think getting that information would help make informed decisions for the committee moving forward. Um, and uh, that's what I will endeavor to do.
Okay, so this is not, um, you know, Karen, we're gonna still keep this in the forefront and discussing it as time comes up. So you may see it on the agenda at times and maybe not. But I think through, as Greg was mentioning in his, with the, with the uh, town administrator, myself with the selectmen, we'll bring this back up. As, as new events or details arise.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I support that. I support the um, looking at the traffic study and environmental impact is all good. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Sean, do you have any other comments? Okay. All right, then going on to new business, uh, the next agenda item is status of FY twenty twenty-one state budget. Greg?
Sure. So as you know, the uh, FY twenty budget expired on July first, twenty twenty. Um, and the budget has been extended by enacting a series of one-twelve budgets. Um, and the House Senate committees and Ways and Means recommended a three-month budget commencing, which began on August first and will move through October thirty-first. Um, some good news is that uh, chapter seventy, generally to education, um, there's a provision that ensures that funding is no less than FY twenty twenty amounts. Um, which is what we use as our projections. Um, the other good news is that, um, which is hard to believe, that there's some light at the end of the tunnel. Um, due to unanticipated increase in July twenty twenty, uh, revenues of approximately seven percent over uh, July of two thousand nineteen. Um, and hopefully in the next uh, month or so, uh, we will get more information about the, the finalized FY twenty twenty-one state budget. Like, again, being a regional district, um, there's a lot riding on this budget in terms of regional transportation reimbursement, um, circuit breaker, a chapter seventy funding. Um, all that is part of our projected FY twenty-one budget voted by the, the towns of Northborough and Southborough.
Okay, any questions from board members or comments? Uh, Paul Bucka?
Yeah, so just to confirm, Greg, the seven percent revenue rise in July over LY, that's state revenues, not Algonquin Regional High School revenues?
That is accurate.
Okay. Karen, is your hand still raised from last time? Or do you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right, going on now uh, to the next item is appointment of school committee member as assistant treasurer. And this will, at the conclusion will also, uh, we will need to vote from the full committee. As most of you are aware, Lynn Winter, who was the Northborough member on the regional board, had served in that capacity as long as she was on the board. And with her moving away and um, and not, uh, and not able to be a regional, a school committee member, we now have her position available. I'd like to thank Lynn Winter for her time and her effort and her expertise that she offered to this position as assistant treasurer. We do have a treasurer position um, that we have. And it was recommended from a study that we have an assistant treasurer just in case it was needed. And um, Greg had asked me to go to the regional uh, operational committee, subcommittee members to see who would like to fill in that position. And uh, we had two members that voiced an interest in serving on that committee, which is Paul Bucka and Chris Covino. And so we have two members that would like to serve in that position, but it's only a, a position for one. I have talked to both of the members. I have asked Chris Covino to put his name on to the audit subcommittee, cause we only had one member on that. So Chris uh, is going to serve onto the audit subcommittee. Yeah, Chris, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Joan. I would say that um, that this is a really, really important position. Um, you know, in terms of uh, budget is one of the major functions of the school committee. And obviously ensuring that monies are spent appropriately, um, is um, again, one of those essential functions. And I would say that um, in having discussions uh, with you, Joan, that um, I would say that Paul is, would be an excellent candidate for this. And I absolutely support his position. Uh, he's been on the committee obviously much longer than I have, since I've only been on for a couple of months. Um, but I think, um, I would hope that um, I could learn a lot from Paul by being on that committee. And uh, I absolutely support uh, Paul being appointed to this position. So I thank you for the consideration, um, and strongly support that we um, vote to appoint Paul uh, as the assistant treasurer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I make.
Is that a motion?
I, I know, it sounded like a motion, uh, but first I have um, uh, Chris, was that a motion?
Uh, it wasn't, but I will gladly make it a motion if that's what the will of the committee is.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to appoint uh, Paul Bucka as the uh, assistant treasurer for the regional school committee.
Second.
Seconded by, was that Sean Ashay?
Dan.
Dan, okay. Um, I see that we have, Paul Bucka has his hand raised. So we'll, before we take a vote, we'll have discussion on this position. Paul?
Oh yeah, I was gonna actually kind of bow out because I thought Chris wanted the position. But uh, I am certainly flattered at, at all the, the nice comments from, from Chris on this. And then, you know, I'm glad you're on the audit committee, Chris. I think that's a big deal. Get, get, um, you know, between audit and operational budget, you, you learn an awful lot here. Christine Teague, Christine Trigg runs the treasurer department in, in our organization. I mean, this is a, this is a backseat to just kind of, not necessarily even look over her shoulder as much as just be there when she's on vacation. Um, and, and you know, it's a, it's a position that, that I think the auditors were, were very appropriate in identifying back, back in the day. When we had all the issues that we had. Um, and uh, you know, I think Lynn did a terrific job at it for, for a number of years. I, I will, you know, and I will gladly accept the position if you guys want me to take it. But uh, you know, at the same time, it'll be terrific to, it'll be terrific to start passing along some of that information and experience to the next generation of the school committee members. Just hoping for, you know, a long, a long career as, as part of this group, Chris, so, thanks for your vote of confidence. Appreciate it.
Hi, any other discussion on the motion on the table? I would just like to say that I have always admired Paul Bucka in any, any negotiations that we have been in, anytime financial. He can, he can divide, subtract and add and multiply six figures at one time and give you the correct answer while we're still trying to plug it in on our uh, calculators. And uh, Paul has that wonderful financial background. And I was, at the same time, I was happy to see that we have a new member, I hate to say new member, but uh, Chris Covino stepping up to um, to take on this position. So, and I appreciate the words that I've heard from both of you in supporting each other in your endeavors and also making it a dynamic duo. So, thank you very much for both uh, Paul Bucka and also for Chris Covino for putting their names up and volunteering for this position. So the vote, the, uh, not the vote, the um, motion on the table is to appoint Paul Bucka as assistant treasurer for the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee. And it was seconded by, made by uh, Chris Covino, seconded by Dan Kalenda. This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yep.
Paul Bucka?
Sure.
Chris Covino?
Absolutely, yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Enthusiastically.
Ooh, Kathy Key?
Woo-hoo, yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Definitely, yes.
Sean Ashay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Absolutely, yes.
And Joan Frank, absolutely yes too. So, a lot of great comments and gosh, you, board members are great to work together with. So, thank you so much and uh, welcome uh, to that position, Paul, and I know you'll do a great job.
To the chair?
Yes.
So Joan, I just wanna congratulate Paul, but also echo Paul's comments about Christine Teague. So Christine Teague has, has done a marvelous job as the regional treasurer and just wanna acknowledge her great work over the past several years. So, um, Paul, Paul is in good hands with Christine.
And Christine's in good hands with Paul too. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's gonna be great doing that together. And I know Christine has been a wonderful addition to us and all the time that she has given us, even in on the Zoom meetings when we've gone through this. Uh, before we go on to the next, which is um, old business, um, are the two co-chairs for APTO, have they shown up at the meeting?
Uh, they have.
I do not, I do not see them.
Okay, so maybe we'll have to reschedule that to next month, if it's the will of the committee. Um, okay, so next is superintendent's report to the committee.
So first, I will um, begin by thanking Principal Sean Beavins for, I, I would say, entering a new organization. At one of the most difficult uh, and challenging times a person could be transitioning to a new position. Um, the position of a principal is challenging on a good day. And um, he's done an outstanding job, um, and, and he has, it feels like he's been here for, for longer than a few months. So I wanna thank Sean, his, his efforts and, and his teamwork. And this will be um, Principal Beavins' first principal's report, so welcome.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Marneau. Uh, it's been, yeah, it's, it's been a, a, an interesting time to transition. As you said, uh, it's a, an important and big job and to, to make that transition at any times can be a challenge. And this year has, has been um, a real, we've, we've faced a lot of challenges, but I think we're in really good shape. Um, because we have really wonderful staff and I've, I've, and the beneficiary have a great deal of support and guidance from yourself and from the rest of the members of central office. And I have a wonderful administrative team, including um, Kathy Carmignani and Andy McGowan and Tim McDonald and Mr. Masarino. And uh, also my staff here in the office. I could go on and on. But we've been very lucky to uh, to um, to have each other and support each other in this transition. Um, I'm happy to report we're off to a good start. Um, our fully remote start began last week. Uh, but I'll go back a little bit farther than that, uh, for the two weeks leading up to that. Uh, with uh, Stephanie's guidance, uh, we developed a, a really robust PD plan where the teachers um, had, uh, developed what we, what I was trying to characterize. As a toolbox of essentials where they had a, a series of uh, or had new skills in really critical platforms that they. uh a series of uh or had new skills in really critical platforms that they were gonna be using a great deal. So those are Power School and Canvas uh and Zoom. Those are three things that teachers needed to be really, really well-versed in to be successful in this year. Um, additionally, we asked them to to consider and explore other platforms and other areas that were gonna en-enhance their instruction. And those were varied by by department and by teacher, uh, but there is a a wide variety of of uh of options for them uh presented by Stephanie. Additionally, uh, we, we focus heavily on uh in that PD time on teachers' um approach to supporting students' social emotional health as they uh welcome them back into the remote environment. And uh simultaneously, we encourage teachers to monitor their own um their own health and well-being because um uh teachers uh un-un- unhealthy or unhappy is not gonna be a really um effective teacher. So those were the areas we focused heavily on for the two weeks leading up to the school, um, to the start of the school year, which began on Wednesday. Um, I'm happy to report that Wednesday, that first half hour, as you might imagine, we got a lot of phone calls uh where kids were having what felt like a lot of phone calls and in retrospect, it was probably uh about what you'd expect, a few, a few calls for kids who were having a hard time logging in. Kids were in the wrong room at the wrong time. It was basically the um digital equivalent or the virtual equivalent of what happens on the first day of school, I think, in every school year, where a student has a hard time finding their way into their first classes, and then we get them sorted out, get them the right schedule, and get them turned in the right direction and deliver them to the right class. So by nine o'clock, it was very quiet around here and teachers were um were instructing their classes. And we got very few um reports that that wasn't working well. So the technical liftoff uh worked really well, and we were really, really uh pleased with how things went. I was able to visit a bunch of classes last week. Uh, I asked teachers to invite me in and I in anticipated a few invitations, and I got about forty, um, which was, felt like a success to me because I'm the new guy and people, I think, were are still ironing out some of the wrinkles of uh being fully remote. And yet I got a many, many result, uh, many invitations, and I was able to go in and see a lot of different approaches to instruction. So I can speak to, just to give you an idea of one of the areas of focus I'm um I'm promoting in the, in the building currently is that even though all the students are on and all the teachers are on a singular platform, which is Zoom really, um, as our uh our ver- video conferencing platform, I'm encouraging teachers to to use as many different modalities and uh access as many different um tools as possible to vary it, vary the experience for students. My worry is that if teachers continually a- and over and over again, um, apply the same strategies in each class, that the compounding fact, uh, the compounding effect on a student will be that they'll be spending forty minutes over and over again in Zoom classrooms, uh, which for those of us who s- who have spent a lot of time on Zoom since March, knowing what a six-hour Zoom, fully Zoom day feels like is not a really exciting or um or engaging way to spend your time. So I've encouraged teachers to to explore and deepen their toolbox for, for um things that they, that might come easily in Zoom. I've asked them to think a little bit differently about, and I've started to see some of the, some of the uh results of that work. So for example, um, I think there are lots of teachers who initially would have broken kids out into into singular classroom, into rooms, or asked them to put their responses into a Google Doc. I'm at, I saw a lot of teachers asking kids to shut their screen down for a twenty-minute period, do their work on a spiral notebook and hand, good old-school handwriting, because the brain science seems to support that, that um results in longer-lasting um mastery of the information you put in that notebook. And I saw at twice, two out of the ten classes I saw, just in the five minutes I was there, uh, using that as a strategy. So we're trying to add, uh, we're trying to um encourage teachers to to take that approach and to give kids a varied um experience in their classrooms, even if um the anchor platform of Zoom is is um is something that is pretty routine for all classes. The energy in the classes I was in was really good. Uh, the teachers are reporting that the kids are enjoying seeing each other. They're enjoying getting back into the rhythm of learning and into the routines that learning, um, that learning delivers, uh, and that the class, the, the school day delivers for them. They also like being back to playing athletics. They also like looking forward to, for those of our students, and there, there's many of them who are gonna be in the hybrid environment, that they're looking forward to October sixth and October seventh, when they they can join the school um in person again. In the meantime, we're starting to transition now that we've gotten the the um remote environment up and running. We're starting to take the steps you might imagine we're taking, which are to start to identify students who may be exhibiting some of the um some um, some evidence that they're becoming disengaged. So we're starting to look for and ask teachers to report into us, the students who are um either not attending fully or not attentive when they're there or not completing work. So we're only in the first week of school, but we're uh starting to convene our student support teams to uh to um develop interventions and intervene very early for students who are having a hard time transitioning from the fully re- remote environment or the summer environment back into into the swing of school. Um, so that is, that's something we're also, we're doing on a kind of student-to-students uh scale. And on a grander scale, the, the department heads and I are looking, uh, are developing uh strategies to identify learning loss in each classroom and how to reconcile that. Um, and there's a variety of ways to come at that. I'm a proponent of uh of spiraling our instructions. So that's a a strategy where our teachers would identify some anchor standards, some real power standards that they would like a student to master in their classroom. And then to, instead of testing them heavily and addressing those gaps in one, one major, deep, dense um approach is to to spiral back to that skill over and over again over the course of the year, so that by the end of the, their year, they have a real deep understanding of that skill. So um, that's kind of a macro view of what we're doing at the school environment, but also a micro view of how we're trying to capture um data on students who are struggling. In comparison to previous, uh, to the spring, um, the spring program for for distance learning, there's some, some enhanced or increased um expectations of students and of teachers, which is, are things I've talked about before, so I won't go into too into depth. But we're asking students to keep their screens as live screens um of as much as possible. There are students for whom that will be a real challenge. And it's also not great if a student is on their live screen all day, just because it's, as I said before, being on a screen for a whole day isn't, isn't the, the best approach. So live screens is something that we've changed, uh, we've asked students to commit to. Teachers are grading work that we're using a conventional grading system, which is our A, B, C, D, F grading um protocols that we've had in the past that we all grew up and are familiar with. Um, and we're asking teachers to really outline very clearly for students the times over the course of the hybrid week, when we transition to hybrid. Um, is this is gonna be particularly important, that we're asking teachers to outline exactly when students are expected to be in front of their computer if they're a remote learner. So um whereas I think in previous iterations of of the remote program and around the region, around the, the state, students who are working remotely were entirely asynchronous. That's not gonna be our approach. What we're, our approach will be is is dictated by the teacher preference. So in many classrooms, teachers will be teaching the students in front of them, and they'll be uh zooming in students who are remote from home as long as they communicate with those students ahead of time, that that's the expectation, our expectation is that students arrive to that Zoom um environment. So that's kind of the teaching and learning part. I have many other different things. I had a, a lot to report on a week ago. And now a week in a high school environment on, in a regular year, a lot happens, and a week in a fully remote environment where athletics has started for the first time in six months is a lot to report. So I can go on and on, but perhaps I might, it might benefit the committee for me to pause and answer questions on the teaching and learning portions of things. And then there's lots of other things about reopening the facility and orienting freshmen and orienting students from other grades that I'm happy to report, report on as well.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Sean Bevan, for your first principal's report. It was very detailed and glad to see the, hear the excitement in your voice of the staff and the students being back in the classroom and look forward, as you said, to them coming back on October the sixth in person. Um, we have a question from a school, school committee member, Kathleen Holland. Kathleen?
Do, thank you, Chair. Sorry to be so chatty this evening. Principal Bevan, I'm, I'm certainly heartened to hear of a true online pedagogy that matches what the research of online pedagogy is, which is, of course, if I've mentioned before, distinguished from the rescue pedagogy that we all worked through last semester. Um, and I'm very heartened yet the uh, the tie into research that children writing um is a different level of comprehension and retention. Um, I liked hearing these points that, that science can inform the practice and the art of education, and I'm very heartened by it. So thank you.
You're welcome, Kathleen. It's been enjoyable. I was in two um, two Zoom um classrooms where the teacher waved a spiral notebook and a pen in front of the, in front of the screen and said, all right, kids, now I'm gonna ask you to do this assignment and take out your notebook to do it. And I think um I, that might be new to, new to kids, but the brain research seems to be very clear that that benefits students greater than when they type the same information into uh into a, a digital set of notes. So I have one teacher in particular who is asking students to photograph that work and then submit it on Canvas as a photograph instead of just typing it in, which might puzzle students. But I think um as long as we're letting them know why we're doing what we're doing, I think kids will go, go, get on board with it.
Let the mask and let them dig the brain, too, also, to me.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, next I have Sean, and then I have Karen Ayers and Kathy Key. Sean O'Shea?
But thanks. Um, I just want to, you know, um, uh, thank you for all the planning and, you know, to give some positive feedback, too. Uh, as you said, it's quite different from the spring um in the experience here in this household, and uh I think it's, it's much more rigorous. So I think you've, you know, um, you've worked well with the staff, and the staff has really risen to that. Uh, and all the professional development has, has paid off. Uh, like, there, there's a lot um of new instructional techniques that uh are being employed and, and uh keeping kids engaged, which is, has been terrific. Um, I just, I, I know from uh si- sitting six hours in front of the screen, though, my son's off like a shot at two o'clock. I, I, I don't know, but get out of the house and get away from his bedroom, so um he can't, October sixth can't come soon enough, although I, I would say he's uh pretty anxious about it, too. You know, it's a, it, it'll be interesting. Um, I also don't want it to be lost, although, um, at least, you know, you've mentioned at the beginning, there were a bunch of phone calls early and then none later about the tech part. I mean, you know, uh, it's amazing, that's a tribute to the tech department and all the infrastructure and everything that's um going on, because it's not necessarily the case everywhere um around the Commonwealth. Uh, so that there's uh stable internet and um not a lot of problems is, is again, you know, that the systems um win there. Um, and just lastly, as you get close to October, as you're getting closer to October sixth, and and maybe that's another discussion later, but you know, is, are things still on track for what the planning was over the summer? Or has any of that shifted in terms of, of how the thinking went and the, the plans that were put forth about uh, you know, like a parallel schedule? And kids, you mentioned a little bit zooming in, or, or has that changed?
No, Sean, I'm hap- uh, Mr. O'Shea, I'm happy to, to report, we are very much on schedule um for, for getting kids back in in person. We're, we're very much looking forward to it, frankly. Um, and so we have some last preparations to make for the building. But we are, you know, we are very much on track and next week, and I just sent something out, and you may have seen it all. Um, if, if you checked your email right before this meeting, but uh we're having um, we're offering a chance for students to come to the building next week from two thirty to, to three thirty and different grade shifts to this, which will be especially beneficial, I think, for freshmen who wanna walk their schedule and get to know what the building is like. It's a big, big building, and we need to remember that, that for a fourteen-year-old, this is gonna be a major change for them. Um, so we're giving students an opportunity um in a very structured kind of way. They have to sign up for a slot, and we'll have mentors, and we'll sign them in and make sure they've gone through the COVID nineteen testing guidelines uh before they come into the building. But they'll have an opportunity to, to orient themselves to the building, which they've already done um in the freshman orientation, but at that time, they didn't have their schedules. So now they'll be able to go from, you know, the first-class space to their second-class space and on and on. Um, we additionally are offering that to the grades ten, eleven, and twelve, if only because I think kids might want to s- get back into the building and orient themselves to our new directional, one-directional traffic patterns, which is something that's quite a bit new. I don't anticipate a huge number of those students will come in to do that, but um I think it's an option, and for the students that come in to do that, it'll be a benefit. Um, so yeah, we are ready very much so um to, to have the kids back. What it will look like for a class where half of the students are at home and half the students are in the classroom is gonna vary teacher by teacher. So some teachers are, um, and I think it'll break, uh, honestly, I think it'll break heavily along um departmental lines because the really sequential uh departments or content areas like math, science, and world languages, where they build Monday's lesson on Tuesdays. Uh, they build Tuesday, Tuesday's lesson on Monday's lesson and, and in that kind of way. It's a little bit different than in the humanities, where you can, you can attack two um really critical power standards-based skills simultaneously and have students work syn- um asynchronously at home on, let's say, a piece of writing while the students in class are, are unpacking a piece of literature. So uh that experience, I think, for the hybrid students is gonna be a little bit different, teacher by teacher, and I think that'll break along departmental lines. So that's something we've been looking closely at. Honestly, there's not a great deal of research on best practices for running that hybrid hybrid model. Uh, every school is, is kinda doing a trial and error thing, um, and that's what we're gonna be doing. But we're just applying the hundreds of years of uh of educational experience that we have that resides in our building, I think, to, to make good choices about what's gonna work, work best for kids. Um, and I think what works best for kids is variety. So I think as long as we're varying the, the approach for kids and not going to the same exact kind of form of instruction for every kid, for every period, I think we'll be more successful than not. Quite a few of our teachers are gonna be live streaming some portion of their classes, so on a hybrid day. Many, I think as many as thirty-five or forty of our teachers for some portion of their week uh will be doing portions of their classroom where they're at least welcoming in the, the remote, remote students while they're teaching in person to the in-person students. And they're finding different ways to engage the remote students while they instruct the in-person students. So I have one teacher in particular who has a really kind of a, or a big setup where he's projecting the Zoom classroom to the back wall of the, of the classroom, so he can see the remote students on the wall as though they're sitting amongst them. That takes two projectors and two different computing devices. It's kind of a very high-end version of, of remote instruction. I'm really eager to see that work and see what it looks like. I think that'll be pretty exciting. And then you have the other teachers who are doing um, doing something that's a little bit more um simplified than that, that they're doing um in-person instruction directly to the students who are only in front of them, while the other students are working on a, on a well-chosen, self-directed piece of asynchronous work at home.
Thank you very much. Kind of sounds like a NBA game with the fans in the stands.
A little bit, right, that's right, that's a good enough.
I appreciate all the level of detail. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide it. Um, yeah, there's just lots of other things happening. I can just throw a few other things out. We had about two hundred and fifty students take the SATs today. Our seniors took the ACTs. You might have known or have heard that we had to cancel the August S A Ts. We had students in today, which was good for them. For frankly, they were able to take it in an environment they're, they're, they know really well. And for us, every opportunity to have more kids into the building, to test out our systems and know how we're communicating that that's working, to see students um rise to the challenge of being compliant with their masks, of staying socially distant. All these are, are opportunities for them to get to know our new environment and for us to, to refine our approaches with uh students and monitoring students and redirecting them when they don't uh comply. And I am happy to report we had zero issues today. Two hundred and fifty seniors, not a single mask so much as below the nose. So I, I was really happy to see that, and the kids, uh, I'm, I'm hoping did, will do well on the exams. So, yeah, we, I think we are ready. I don't think, I know we're, we're gonna be ready on uh, on October sixth. We have some last, you know, things to get ready for. We need to communicate to kids what our expectations are. That'll be a big push for next week to do a bit of a communications uh push, so that kids know what the expectations are here um to maintain our health and safety. And um I think we're gonna be ready to go, and I think kids are gonna be dying to get in. I think they're gonna be very excited. And our APTO, who's not here tonight, um, I will put in a plug for them. They've been wonderful, wonderfully supportive. They're coming out to uh support the teachers and give them a, bring in an ice cream truck on Friday to, to thank our teachers for their hard work. And then they are gonna decorate the building on October sixth and then October seventh for students who are arriving. They have to do it two days because we have two sets of kids coming. It's not just the kids who arrive in person on, on the sixth. We're having a whole new group of kids coming in on the seventh. We need to keep in mind, they haven't been in school since, since March, and this transition from the outside back into the building, crossing that threshold is an important moment for them. So I think that's, I, I have other things I can share. I, I've been developing my entry plan. Um, I've been, over the summer, um, meeting teachers who, some of whom I knew in my previous role as an English teacher here, and some of, some of whom I'm, I'm learning uh and getting to know. I interviewed fourteen teachers for a half an hour- 14 teachers for a half an hour each to, to inform my, my, my entry plan, which is, it's currently in development. And that's a critical part in understanding the, the professional culture of a building is to ask teachers what is working. What are you most proud of? What do you think needs work in our building? What is the student culture like? All those kinds of questions you might imagine. So I interviewed those teachers. I interviewed a few. Focus groups of parents. I'm going to do a little bit more of that in the fall and then of course the students. So once the students are back in the building and, and they get. Settled in, I will find some students to sit and meet with and hear about what their experience is like. And that combined with my observations. Of what's working instructionally and culturally in our building will inform my goal setting for the year and. The direction we need to, to move this building in. And I will submit that in a report to, to, to Mr. Martino.
Okay, we have a, thank you, Mr. Bevan for that further update. And it's good to hear about the enthusiasm of the parents and even the students to be back and, and makes me very proud of all the students, especially in wearing their mask and this seriousness of it. Please, we're raising such great children and young adults. So thank you for your leadership. We have a question from Kathy Key.
You know what? It wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was just, I would just wanted to do pretty much the same thing as Sean. Just. You know, thank you for the update and, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that. Your team and the teachers have put into having the kids come back into, in the building. I think it's. Important to get them into a, a new normal world, I guess I should say about not only being in their house, but, but getting them back into school and the classroom and. And with their peers. And, and I love that teachers are thinking outside the box as far as, you know, the teacher having the, the kids in the back wall. I think that's awesome. And, and a notebook. So I just dropped off my daughter at school and. She has like 10 notebooks with her because that's how she learns. And she, even when she was here doing remote. One of the professors just wanted them to put all their papers on to, on the computer. And she reached out and said, I learned better from writing it down on paper. Trying to take a picture in front of him. He said, yes. So. I think it's a great way for, I think kids have kind of lost that a little bit. I'm glad to hear that teachers are still doing that. And, and as far as the masks go, I think that we have to give kids a benefit that, you know, they'll do the right thing, you know, just being on two college campuses in the past two weeks. Everyone, every student that I walked by on the hall and. Throughout the campuses and sidewalks, everyone had a mask on. And it was really impressive to see, you know, kids who are 18 to 22 year olds. You know, they want to be there and they want to stay there. So they're going to do the right thing. And I think that the kids at the high school will do the same thing. So thanks again for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure so far and I totally agree. I think we, if we're questioning whether or not students can abide the mask rules, I think we're not giving them enough credit. I think they have a great deal to. Gain by, by, by living up to that very reasonable expectation.
Okay, thank you. And seeing that there aren't any other questions, thank you for the excellent, again, principals report, Mr. Sean Bevan. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It's been a, a pleasure to be back and I'm excited to see and meet kids in a few weeks. I'll give you a, you know, I'll give you another report soon. I look forward to it.
Okay, great. Next item is on the superintendent's report to the committee is enrollments.
So in your packet is the monthly enrollment report for. September 10th, 2020. And as of September 10th, we had 1,405 students enrolled. We were concerned about if we lose more students than typically to private school enrollment because of the. Pandemic and we did not see that. So that, that is good news. And as always, the October 1 enrollment number is essential as it kind of guides the budget process in terms of the assessments to each of the towns. And I can share that our projections for the assessments. That the finance team did are, are looking to be very accurate. So more information in the October report for enrollment.
Okay, Paul Bucka.
Greg, so the second set of numbers, the projected numbers of what you think is going to happen in October. When we, we take, you know, we take the, the count. Is that correct?
So the, the second set of numbers, so the September, so Paul, I might not be understanding your question.
I'm looking at, I've, I've, the, the paperwork that, that you handed out to us, that on, on your.
Yes. So that is, that is the September 10th.
And then the second set that's listed as projected, Northborough, Southborough. So I'd say for grade nine, it's 206, 152, 358 total.
Correct. That was what we used projected. As of 5/21/20. Those are the projected numbers as of that date.
So the 358 went down to 322 in reality?
Correct. So we had projected 358. And then it went down to 322. As for, for ninth grade. I believe that's what you're looking at.
Yeah. So, okay. So just, so the projections for 10, 10 and 11 were pretty, were, were very good. It's interesting that for nine and 12, they were both off by a kind of a more significant number. But. Okay. I just, I wasn't quite sure I was understanding what I was looking at. Thank you.
Sean O'Shea? Nope. Okay. All right. The next one and is the final FY 20 expenditure report, which will also need a vote.
So I will, before turning it over to Becky, just. You know, thank the financial team and Becky's leadership for concluding the fiscal year 20. Becky has, and her team has been in a financial multiverse for the past. Month or so, they've been in FY 20, FY 21 and, and the FY 22 in terms of budget, budget. So it's been a tremendous effort and Becky will share a brief presentation on FY 20.
Thank you, Greg. So as you can see in your packet, FY 20 did end with a balance of $217,002.74. Or 0.91% of the operational budget. Those funds will revert to excess and deficiency. So as previously stated, areas where we achieved cost savings due to the closure were with substitutes and transportation costs as well as in electricity and heating. We are on track to have a fully funded E and D at the 5%. Rate pending the certification from the Department of Revenue. And as Greg said, I would really like to thank the finance team, specifically Christine Teig, Carolyn Willard, Mark Dubiel, and also Michelle Lemay for their, all their work in closing out. Fiscal year 20. It was definitely interesting doing it over Zooms and Google meets, but I'm proud of the work that went into it to close that out.
Any questions for Rebecca? Okay, seeing none, Paul Bucka.
I would move that we approve the FY 20 statement of revenue.
Second. Second by Dan.
Yes.
Kalenda. Kay, roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino? Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polachko?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Chris Covino?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. And it passes unanimous. The next.
If I could.
Yes.
To echo Greg's comments. I mean, Becky and her team did terrific. Yeah, this was not an easy year for them to, with a lot of moving targets and they're, they're to be commended.
Excellent conclusion to that roll call vote. Thank you, Paul Bucka, very much for that comment. And I think we all would echo the same thing. So thank you, Rebecca. Thank you very much. It hasn't been an easy year. Okay. Next item is the final FY 20 statement of review, which will also be a vote.
Again, I will turn it over to Becky to share the final FY 20 statement of revenue.
So I'm pleased to present the final revenue report for FY 20. As you'll notice, we are in receipt of all of our state funds as well as the town assessments. You will notice an adjustment of $72,114 in the transportation line item. And that represents the vote that was taken at the June meeting by the school committee to transfer funds to the regional transportation fund. We have also noted the receipts for our athletic, our student activity fees and our parking fees. I will note that the parking fee reimbursements that were issued to students for FY 20 were not generated until July. So those fees are still showing in our revenues as of June 30th.
Okay, Paul Bucka.
So it, it just, just curious on this, on this motion. If this is the final for the year, we not usually qualify our, our approval with. Until audited as part of the motion?
Yes.
That is accurate.
Okay. So I would, I would move that we approve the final FY 21 monthly general fund expenditure report as presented until audited.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, motion made by Paul Buckas, seconded by Kathleen Holland. Again, it's a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yep.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polachko?
Yes.
And I vote in affirmative. It passes unanimous. Thank you very much. Rebecca, thank you again. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is the capital plan.
So in the packet is the fiscal year 2019 through 2025 proposed capital plan improvements. For your reference, I will be working with Cheryl to schedule a capital plan subcommittee meeting to review this in more detail in preparation for the FY 22 budget.
Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is FY 21 monthly general fund expenditure report, which will also be a vote.
So again, we are three months into the fiscal year 21 budget and we are keeping a very close eye. As a result of the current context in COVID-19. And Becky, Becky will give a highlight of the monthly fund, monthly general fund expenditure report for this month.
Okay, so as of August 31st, 2020, we had just shy of 3.3 or 13.65 remaining on the bottom line. You will notice in comparison to last year, that is a slightly higher amount where last year we had 1.2 million remaining or 5.08% remaining on the bottom line. The main reason for this difference is that a number of our larger items in the FY 21 budget had not yet been encumbered as of August 31st. Specifically, you'll note the transportation contract, our Medicare service tax, water sewer and out of district special education tuitions were not fully entered into the system. Those items have now been encumbered and they will be reflected in next month's report. There are some areas that we're closely monitoring, monitoring and those are maintenance of grounds, new equipment under 5,000 and also our health insurance line. We're doing some digging on that line. You'll also notice that a new line item for PPE supplies was created and added to the budget. And we also anticipate moving some of the applicable expenses onto the school reopening grant that we were just informed we had received today. And so once we are able to, we will be moving those expenses off of the operational budget and onto that grant funding.
Rebecca, what was that school reopening grant? What was the amount that we received in that?
That was for $314,125.
And when does that have to be, is there a deadline on spending that money and reporting back?
So that does have to be spent by December 30th of 2020. However, we are able to use funds that we have already expended this year.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Holland, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I did not get to the button fast enough about the capital improvements. I see a great deal of, of. Crossing out of a series of numbers. And you know that the school committee several times has brought up the tennis court and. Track issues. It looks as though the tennis court has been deferred. Is that right?
That is accurate.
Okay. So I'm wondering what the, there were a lot that were diminished. How does that diminish the educational experience of all those categories that were there? I just. Wanted to see the story behind the number, please.
So I think it's a, it's a larger conversation and really around how will we fund these expenditures? I know we are looking at a master plan, for example, for the tennis courts and some of the larger capital expenditures. But again, it's, I think it's a, an important conversation that we have around, we can't keep pushing these capital projects out. Because they start to accumulate and we will be having a conversation at the operational, the capital budget subcommittee meeting.
Could we put that on our agenda? And I know that I played tennis there this summer until my husband fell on a ball and broke a foot, but. And it wasn't the fault of the tennis court. But I would be interested in just understanding about the track and those kinds of things, wondering if at times, if we put this on the agenda, we could have photographs or we're asked to go visit things and. So just that we better understand the process as well as the numbers.
I would, I would just add Kathleen, that the boosters, working in partnership with the boosters. And we worked with Gail Associates to get some architectural drawings and we have. Some drawings and some renderings that we'd be able to share with the committee around the track, the tennis courts and the overall athletic complex at, at a future meeting. So be happy to do that.
That would be great, including usage because there were very few children or high school age people throughout the summer. And of course, I don't know anything about the teams. But it certainly was being used by the public. And also for people teaching lessons there, using the property there. So I'm just trying to understand the myriad of usages and details involved with each of these. Line items that we're responsible for reviewing.
Okay, thank you Kathleen. All right, seeing that there aren't any other questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the FY 21 monthly general fund expenditure report as presented. Pardon me? Okay, was it moved by Paul Bucka?
I think Dan.
Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
And seconded?
By Paul.
By Paul Bucka? Was there any other discussion I heard? Maybe it was just background noise. I just didn't know if somebody else had something, that they had a question or comment? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we have a motion on the table made by Dan Kalenda, seconded by Paul Bucka. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polachko?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It passes unanimous. The next item we have is the FY 21 statement of revenue and there will also be a vote.
So again, I will turn it over to Becky to share the statement of revenue as of August 31st.
So as you can see, there isn't much activity on the FY 21 revenue report year to date. But I did want to touch on some of our estimates for receipts for FY 21. As Greg had previously mentioned, during our budget process, we had kept the FY 20, chapter 70 fund level. And so that is reflected here on the revenue projections. We also had projected a $700,000 regional transportation reimbursement. But once again, we have not received any guidance yet from Desi on those figures as to what we might be looking for for FY 21. We have also adjusted the athletic fee and the parking fee receipts to reflect the revised fee structure that was adopted at last month's special school committee meeting. And then finally, we kept our circuit breaker projection at the same level as FY 20 receipts. Because once again, we have not received a figure yet from Desi as to what we can expect for FY 21.
Any questions or comments? Again, Rebecca, thank you very much for the detailed report. Kathleen, is your hand still raised from last time?
Yes, it is. Sorry, I've got to get used to that. Being the teacher, I'm always the one with my hand up.
Okay, I just don't want to miss in case you have a question or comment. All right, so we need to have a vote on the FY21 Statement of Revenue.
No move.
So moved by Paul Bucka, second?
Second.
Seconded by Shawna Shay, thank you. Roll call vote, any other further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland? Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimous. The next item that we have is the OPEB trust transfer, and this will also be a vote.
So again, as the committee knows, the committee voted to establish another post-employment benefits trust fund through PARs. That was established in the spring of last year. And we did also work with a financial advisors to determine the investment strategy. And Becky will fill you in on the next, and hopefully, one of the final steps of actually depositing money into the OPEB account.
So tonight, the final step, I guess, in getting started with this trust fund is to vote to transfer the amount that is currently in the insurance account to the OPEB trust fund. And that amount is $138,084.93. It is our expectation that that amount, coupled with the amount that was budgeted in the operational budget, will be deposited into the trust fund. So we will start off our account balance with an even $150,000.
Madam Chair, I would wholeheartedly request that we approve the transfer.
I would second that.
And made by Dan Kalenda, seconded by Paul Bucka. Do we have to have a motion with that amount in it, or we find the way it is, Greg?
Becky, do you have the exact?
I have the exact number, and I have, it's $138,084.93.
So move with the amount.
Okay, Paul, will you? Paul Bucka, will you? Okay, so the amendment has been seconded, and so now we'll take a roll call vote with the amendment. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and it passes unanimous. Thank you very much. Yes.
So just a quick comment on OPEB. I mean, this has been something that showed up a few years ago on one of our audit reports, and it is just a giant number. It's terrific that Becky and her team were able to put together as much money as they have to make our initial investment in this trust as robust as it is. It's barely scratching what we owe, but it's way more than I thought we were going to accomplish. Congrats, Becky.
Great comment, Paul. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is FY22 Budget Priorities.
So, for your references, the FY, really FY2021 budget priorities, and my recommendation is that we bring these budget priorities to the Operational Budget Subcommittee to have a deeper conversation before bringing these back for a larger conversation with the committee in October. Again, with the Vision 2026 Educate, Inspire, Challenge Strategic Plan, I think it's important to revisit these and make sure there's alignment to that strategic plan.
Okay, any comment? Okay, so the Operational Subcommittee will be looking at those and bringing them back. Do you think Greg will have those first added for our October meeting, did you say?
Yes, that is the goal.
Okay, so Operational Subcommittee members, I don't know, do we have a meeting already planned, or do we have to do a doodle poll for that?
I believe Cheryl has a meeting planned already.
Okay.
I think it's October 5th.
October 5th? Okay.
I think so.
That's right.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, next we have FY22 Budget Calendar.
So in your packet is the FY22 Proposed Budget Calendar, and as you know, this is a dynamic document, and as new events and dates come forward, we'll be amending this document. I'll just share that we already started the budget process at the central office and at the high school. And so, it's, we've, you know, again, we're in FY21 and preparing for FY22, so more information to follow in the next weeks and months ahead.
Okay, and now we go on to old business. The first item is solar update.
Sure, so I'm thrilled to have Keith Lavoy provide an update on the solar project at Algonquin Regional High School. And before I turn it over to Keith, I just want to also thank Mike Gorman. He spearheaded this project in the fall of last year, and really got it off the ground. And Keith has partnered with Mike Gorman, and we're actually, it's coming to fruition. So Keith will give an update on what is happening.
Thank you, Greg. It certainly has come to fruition. If you recall, back in April of 2020, the school committee did approve of the proposal to move forward with a solar array on the roof of Algonquin Regional High School. Immediately following that meeting, we started all the paperwork and other planning that needed to go in place. And I can report that, starting about two weeks ago, we were able to bring a lot of the equipment on site, and about 80% of the material has already been brought up onto the roof. And behind the scenes now, a lot of the electricians are working and establishing all the runs that need to happen in order for a seamless transition. We are expecting that construction and all the other pieces are not going to interrupt the school day at all, and especially around our October 6 opening. A majority of all the equipment and material will be on the roof at that point, so we are not anticipating any interruptions in the parking lots or anything that would be loud enough to interfere with classes. The other thing that is happening is we are keeping in really routine contact with Select Energy. Select is the contractor that is responsible for the project, and they have been great. In fact, I got an additional update this morning from them, just sharing that it's moving along quite steadily. And we are anticipating that by the end of October, things are going to be pretty much done, and we're hoping to be fully online by the middle of November. So that is, you know, a brief update about where we are with the solar project. The other thing that is a key highlight of it is that the teachers are thrilled to have seen the equipment online. I don't think, because, you know, many of them might not have been part of that meeting at the time, they weren't quite aware that the project will be launching. So we're very excited to partner with Principal Bevan and Mike Gorman, the facilities manager, to really bring our students into the project, understand why we did it, what the impact will be, and just how the engineering and everything works. So that was part of the proposal, the educational component, and that is something that I know the Science Department is very eager to explore. So as we reopen the building, we are going to have another toy to play with, so to say. And I think everyone's really excited about seeing it come to fruition. I know it's been a long time coming, but it's here, and I'm going to be happy to give an update in the months to come upon its completion and full inception. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time as best I can.
And Paul Desmond, and then Paul Bucka.
I don't have a question, but Keith, I'll second that. It has been a long time coming. I was just checking my notes, and I found first references to solar subcommittees like back in 2015. So I think it says a lot to you and to Mike Gorman for getting this over the finish line. I know we had a lot of fits and starts with consultants along the way, things like that, but I just couldn't be happier to see this actually happening now, so congrats.
Yeah, great. I'm looking forward to it as well, and I did also see that about the same, Paul, about 2015.
And Paul Desmond, thank you for serving on that Subcommittee and for that long. Thank you very much for your dedication and time. Paul Bucka?
Yeah, I'm sure I would echo this. We've been talking about it for a long time. It's terrific to know that, you know, the timeframe from delivering all the equipment to the parking lot of the school to actually moving it up to the roof and getting it up and operational is as short a timeframe as it is. I guess I'm wondering, and maybe Keith, this is more for Becky or Greg. I mean, now that it's closer, are we able to fine-tune a little bit our income expectations and kind of modify budgets appropriately for that? Or do we need to wait a little while longer to see what really happens?
I can respond quickly to that, Paul. I think we are, we're going to need to pause on that for a minute to really see how things come together. I know that the work that I've been doing with Select, the numbers are improving as they get to an operational phase, but it is not something I think they are or we are prepared to forecast quite yet.
So just a follow-up, can we forecast when the first check may arrive?
Yeah, so I'll just comment that, you know, the projections were a floor that Select gave us, so we can expect those savings. And then as Keith mentioned, it's looking more promising, and we are working closely with the town of Northborough to maximize all the savings possible. So more information as we follow, and we'll take a picture of the first check that we will receive and make sure that the school committee gets their eyes on it.
I will definitely do that.
Send it to the Assistant Treasurer. Yeah, let him endorse that first one. And Keith, thank you so very much. I was shocked to see that it's going to be online in the middle of November, so that's going to be really, really great to see. And it was nice to see that the equipment, 80% of it is there and on the roof. So thank you very much, and for everybody who has been working on this project since 2015. The next item we have is school start time under old business.
So as the committee is aware, the Start Time Study Group presented recommendations to the committee last spring, and we voted to change the start time of Algonquin Regional High School to 8:00 a.m., and that will begin in the fall of 2021. And my goal is just to provide monthly updates to make sure it's on our radar in terms of planning and everything that needs to go into communicating to the community that there will be a change coming again in the fall of 2021.
Okay, and I'd also like to thank, I believe it was Kathleen Polczko, who served on that committee and gave a lot of time, and again, expertise and knowledge to that. So Kathleen, thank you very much for guiding that committee. I believe you guided it, and seeing that you have come up with a great plan for the fall of 2021.
And through the chair, I would like to echo your comments, and I believe that was an eight-year journey, if I'm not correct.
Eight, that's longer than the solar.
Yes, you're welcome.
We should give out little pins, and you know.
That's right. I was on the longest committee.
You were, you were. Well, it was well worth it. There was a lot of time and a lot of effort, and that is also something that came up from parent concerns that came through an audience sharing, I believe, at one of our meetings. So good things happen when you wait, I guess this goes. Thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item we have is policy development and distribution, and we have two new ones, which are the second readings.
The first policy is the face covering policy, A170, and we did partner with Northborough Pre-K through 8 and Southborough Pre-K through 8. So we, this is the identical policy that was adopted in those two towns with those committees. And the second policy is the general interim policy on COVID-related issues, titled Interim 001.
So Greg, since these are second readings, if there aren't any other changes, can we take a vote to adopt them as a policy tonight?
It's the will of the committee, yes.
Okay. So how would the committee like to go? Would you like to, if you've had a chance to look at the second readings, and if you feel that they're fine, if at this time, I like to entertain a motion to accept?
I'd like a motion to accept policy A170, the new face coverings, and the new general policy on COVID-related issues, interim 001.
Okay, is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, Karen, do you second both?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the two new policies, A170 and interim 001. Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
I think Paul is his hand up.
Oh, Paul, I'm sorry. Thank you. Paul Bucka?
Yeah, I'm just wondering the opinion of any policy Subcommittee members. If, you know, if this is, if this is ready, it certainly was, certainly dramatically marked up from its original content. And before we vote on this, I just wouldn't mind hearing from our policy Subcommittee members.
So, Paul, this is Kathy. We went through this policy, I think, Greg, three times?
Yes.
Yeah, like head to toe, so I think this is a good policy to go forward with. And I think what's not in the policy is, I'm having like a mind blank right now.
Procedures.
Yeah, procedures. So what we didn't, what we really couldn't put in that is in the procedures. So I would vote on it. I would, I mean, personally. I think it's good to go.
Okay, any other comments, Paul?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so seeing no other comments, roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, and so it passes unanimous that we have two new policies, A170 and interim 001. Going on to the next agenda is audiences. Do any of the administrators have anything that they would like to share? Okay, seeing none, is there anything that board members would like to bring up tonight through audience sharing? Okay, I just have one. As it lays on to the Northborough and the Southborough Ed Foundation, I attended through Zoom the first Northborough Education Foundation meeting, and at that time, they announced grants, K to 12. And I just like, and I sent it to all of you in a separate email, but I'd just like to highlight that the Northborough Ed Foundation had given four grants to Algonquin Regional High School, and it was a short period of time. They decided to give a two-week window for grants because with going into remote learning on Mondays, they figured that maybe some of the teachers would like to need some new materials to help assist in those endeavors. And the grants that were given were to a physics lab grant. The other one, number two, was a math and science iPad styluses. The third one was a parlay, a solution to hosting digital Socratic seminars. And the last one, which went to all schools, was remote technology resources for EL students. So I will be giving updates as I also attend the Southborough Education Foundation. And if you happen to go past any of the schools in Northborough and also Algonquin, if you see pinwheels out in the front, that was the fundraising effort by the Northborough Educational Foundation, and the pinwheels are just as a symbol of welcome back to all the students and staff. And that's the end of my sharing for tonight. So the next item is personnel.
Through the chair, we have one attendee in the audience who has a hand raised.
Okay.
So I will.
Hello?
Hi, if you could identify yourself and give your name and address, name and address?
Yep, my name is Kristen Wickstead. I live at 2 St. Brook Lane in Northborough. And I'm surprised I'm the only one with my hand up. Hi, everyone. And I'm surprised I'm the only one with my hand up. Hi, everyone. Um, so I just wanted to give you, I'm one of the the forces behind the nine-hundred-person signature, the nine-hundred signatures on the petition that we have circulating around regarding the Zero Bartlett Street property as well as the One Lyman Street property, which I'm not sure you guys even know that is happening. So I'll do my best with my um, my team of moms and dads who live all over Northborough and is spreading towards Southborough to fill you guys in on what's going on. We have a website called savebartlett.org that you might want to check out. Um, we also, like I said, have the um, petition. We have yellow signs all over town that are also spreading to Southborough because the Southborough people, I mean, they don't get a vote. So we're trying to speak for them because their kids go to school with our kids. But Bartlett Street is the road that they use to get to school if they go to Algonquin, right? Most of them are going to use Bartlett Street. And um, the other thing that I really wanted to make sure you understand is that the Gutierrez Company, that's the company that's um, owns the land and is proposing to build this mega distribution center, has applied for a special permit for site plan review. So the fact that you heard from our town administrator that they have not applied for a variance was only part of the story. And that's also something you should pay attention to. So that's, that's all I had to say. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this really difficult um, school year. My husband is here. Could he say something? His name's John Wickstead. Is that okay?
Uh, yes, he can. Uh, but I just want to mention that we usually allow audience sharing to five minutes. So you have about three minutes left. That'd be great.
Won't take that long. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, John Wickstead from uh, Two Sturbrook Lane in Northborough. The reason that the school committee should pay attention to this frankly, and I I appreciate your members' discussion, and I appreciate them wanting to stay in their lane. But the reason that this is relevant to the, you know, particularly to Algonquin Regional High School is that the amount of traffic which is currently being generated on Bartlett Street is really a safety hazard to our student drivers. You know, these are the least qualified drivers on the road. The large warehouse that's at the top of Bartlett Street is not yet open. That's going to have a hundred and forty-six truck bays, eighteen-wheeler truck bays, a hundred and forty-six of them. This new uh, development that they're trying to build a quarter of a mile from the front entrance to the high school will have another thirty-six eighteen-wheeler truck bays. If that turns into an Amazon distribution center, you're going to see enormous amounts of traffic on Bartlett Street, which is going to put the student drivers driving back and forth from Southborough at significant risk.
And the Northborough drivers also. Because if it, it depending on what kind of distribution center it is, it may not just be big trucks. It may be smaller cars and vans that we have no control whether or not they can take a left or a right or whatever. So anyway, we just wanted to communicate all that, make sure you guys really understand what's going on. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you for sharing with us. We we appreciate it. Okay? Um, the only, oh, one other thing I forgot to mention, and mine just came in the mail. And if any new members haven't received it, please let me know, is the um, MASC. My booklet just came in the mail, which is for the seventy-fifth annual meeting delegate manual, which will be held um, on November seventh, twenty twenty. So mine just came in the mail. If a new member has not received it, just send me an email. I'll make sure uh, through MASC that you get it. Okay, next is personnel.
So uh, through the chair, we have two more attendees in the audience who have their hands raised.
Sorry.
So hey.
Oh, hello, am I on? Oh, this is, this is Rachel Armstrong. I'm at Ten Hemlock Drive in Northborough. Um, I, a couple of things. You were asking for a schematic of where the distribution facility would be located um, in relation to the high school. And that actually is on savebartlett.org. There's an aerial view. So you'd be able to see how dramatically the distribution facility would impact the high school. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is second John and Kristen's point about teen drivers. But also, we see students after school running. Um, the athletics, as you know, have started and it's such a nice sight to see. Um, but you're not talking about just teen drivers from both towns. You're talking about kids running after school on Bartlett as part of uh, practice. You're talking about walkers to school. Um, so this has significant impact on the entire school community. Teen drivers, especially as the mom of a a girl getting her license right now, it's especially frightening. But for all the after-school athletes, I think it's it's also it it um, a huge, could be a a huge tragic problem, unfortunately. So um, you know, we are, we're very concerned for both communities.
Thank you, Rachel.
And then we have uh, one more member uh, in the audience who'd like to share.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, my name is Janine Callahan and I live at Six Sturrock Brook Lane. And um, along with the um, Rachel and um, Jack and Kristen who just spoke, I just want to um, again, uh, say thank you for for allowing us to be on your agenda. And I know that, you know, there was some concern um, from your side about um, whether this falls under your, you know, jurisdiction or however, whatever you want to call it. Um, and in my opinion, I mean, I feel that it does. Then I ask that you do please keep it on your radar, um, because it does impact our students um, significantly. As Kristen said, it's it's our new student drivers. It is the hub of CMSC and Cristo's Driving School, um, who are there on a daily basis on picking students up, learning how to drive. Um, it's the kids that, like Rachel said, that are walking to school, not only to, you know, Algonquin, but to Peaslee Elementary School. Um, so it does impact um, the school. I truly believe that. Um, the town administrator who who said that it doesn't have an impact and variances and uh, that's just, I just, that's not true. Um, it it, the traffic studies that have been done so far are not valid. They don't consider the um, the distribution centers that are already there and are not full. Two of them still are significantly low when it comes to um, being occupied. And then, like Jack said, adding a whole new facility is going to put a tremendous stress on on this road that is the main interest to Algonquin. And um, whether we want to think about it or not, and the whole environmental side of it is, you know, they have a special permit or require a special permit because this is going over groundwater. Um, and this groundwater is the backup supply to Northborough's water supply. And uh, you know, Algonquin uses Northborough's water supply. And and to think that this could be an issue someday down the road and it doesn't affect the school system. Um, I just, I just, again, would like you all to keep it on your radar because it truly does. And and it's just, it's it's concerning um, at this point that the town of Northborough would allow something this close to a a a school district, a a high school is is alarming. So again, if you could please keep it on your radar, um, I know I would truly appreciate it along with everybody else, the nine-hundred people that have signed our petition, that have agreed to put our signs up um, saying that they are concerned and and enough is enough.
Okay, thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Uh huh.
I just wanted, I just want to clarify that that my conversation with um, town administrator Kader, he he did not weigh in one way or the other. He was just sharing what it was zoned for, what the plan was. Um, and was just more about the facts. And and basically, again, the question is what material impact does it have on Algonquin Regional High School program? And and that is the question for the committee. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in terms of my conversation with town administrator Kader.
Thank you for the clarification, Greg. Are there any other audience members waiting? No? Okay, so well, now we'll go on to personnel.
In your packet is that personnel report dated September eighteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen. Um, and uh, we had a couple leave of absences, transfers and um, two resignations. Jennifer Suker, who was our director of English, interim director of English language education, um, was fortunate enough to get a parallel job for the Hockington Public Schools. So we want to wish her well. Um, and then Catherine Waters was a huge loss for our choral music program at the high school. Um, relocated unfortunately, but it, um, she's another major loss to our music program and we're looking to fill her shoes. And then also, um, you have a memo of staff appointments. Um, so our, a list of new staff members who are appointed for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And I just want to uh, thank again all of the department chairs at the high school and administrative team and Heather Richards for bringing on um, outstanding faculty to join the work for the this upcoming school year.
Okay, next we have communications. That are um, in the packet, uh, the district back-to-school newsletter communication, distribution of MASC, MAS joint conference information, uh, distribution of the twenty twenty twenty-one Subcommittee and liaison assignments. If there are any changes to that, just send me an email and we can make the updates uh, as you look those over. And number four, notification of a butters, the Northborough Trails Committee. The next item we have is approval of bills and payrolls. So um, Rebecca, anything on that, on the bills and payrolls of signing?
We will be um, sending out the upcoming payroll warrant and a few more um, AP warrants probably by um, either Friday or first thing Monday morning.
Okay. And we have agenda items for next month. I think the list has been growing. What has down so far is distribution of twenty 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 twenty-one department presentations. And number two, COVID nineteen impact on fine and performing arts, October. Uh, Greg, would we be able to see if we could reschedule the APTO presentation?
Yes.
Okay, and other things that I marked down was um, because we're going to have that operational um, meeting, October fifth is Kathy Key said, so we may have budget priorities. Um, I think um, we also talked about, Greg, about having uh, in October, a mass core presentation?
Correct.
And I know that Sean O'Shea um, had sent a request and wanted to, at the same time we do the mass core presentation, is music alignment to mass core. Sean, is there anything that you wanted to speak about that?
No, I think um, I I I, after our discussion last time, I think I understand the the whole thing. I thought it was um, state requirements. It's really, it's the requirements college colleges have. I think the last discussion we have cleared everything up for me. Thank you.
Okay, so we, so I can cross that one out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and then maybe in the, yes, Greg?
So we also have the National Merit Scholars. Um, and unfortunately, we will not be having cake unless we have virtual cake. Maybe we can have virtual cupcakes.
That's always a highlight of of our meetings is is uh, rewarding them and congratulating them and their parents at the same time. Um, could we also, I don't, maybe we could look at this is, um, it came up uh, in tonight's discussion, Capital Projects from Kathleen Highland. That was the track tennis courts. And then we would all, you know, even though it's virtual, will we still be having a delegate uh, to represent this at the seventy-fifth annual meeting and doing the resolutions?
Yes, so we'll vote a delegate at that at next meeting.
Okay. Those are the ones that I've written down from tonight. Is there anything else the board members would like to add as future agenda items?
No, but I do owe you guys cake from last year's Northborough, because Kathleen Pletchko told me that it was, we always had to have cake. It was my fault. We didn't. So our first meeting back, I'll have my cake.
Okay, well, and if this one, we'll have to have two cakes, maybe cakes and a cake and cupcakes, Kathy Key.
It is hard to justify eating cupcakes, sitting on the Zoom all day, though. I'm going to have to up my game.
Love carrot cake.
Yes.
The great false worshiping of carrot cake.
Yeah.
As a badge.
Okay, so the next uh, scheduled school committee meeting that we have will be for Wednesday, October twenty-first. And then the next combined meeting will be Wednesday, December the sixteenth, twenty twenty. So seeing that there isn't any other um, agenda items, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-eight. And that was made by Paul Bucka.
I'll second it. That's all a very reasonable meeting this evening, eh, folks?
Hey, it was good. I liked it. I liked it. And we get everybody back, especially the administrators, before the bewitching art. So I, motion to adjourn was made by Paul Bucka, seconded by Kathleen Highland. Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yeah.
Dan Kalenda? Dan Kalenda? Okay, uh, Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko? Kathleen Pletchko? Okay, she's traveling and myself, and it passes in the affirmative. So we are adjourned at eight fifty-nine PM. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. Administrators, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything that you're doing. And good luck with getting all the kids back in. Glad to hear all this great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.